How long the Newcastle State Department meeting of Monday, April 15, 2024 to order? We do have an invitation by Bill Taylor. It's our first day, yes, you can invitation being given by Bill Taylor, Richard Donlin.
You can stand if you'd like. Heavenly Father, we realize that all authority comes from you. And you have established all authority and you have told us to pray for those in positions of authority and responsibility. And so we just ask, Lord, that you would bless this meeting, that you would bless these that are giving their time, their effort, their concern. Because you've said that we should pray for productivity and peace in order that we might live well. And so we just pray, Lord, that you would help them to make the proper decisions, to minister peace, help us to be productive in this time and in this place. So we just thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry I have to leave, I have a meeting in my house.
Thank you. If you could stay standing for the special meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Can I get approval of the agenda?
So move.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to add something under new business. I have a report about a program that Upton has in regard to the EMS.
That would be listed as number two under new business. Can we get approval of the agenda with me, ma'am?
Madam, I approve, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I get the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, April 1, 2024, and the special meeting of Wednesday, April 10, 2024?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
With a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens in Business verbal, number one, Ed Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I was here a few months ago with news about a joint resolution to get some solid waste, some census money that was earmarked for solid waste. County Commissioner signs that resolution, joint resolution, to a score our meeting. That's here for you guys to signature tonight. I will give it to Upton tomorrow night for those signatures. Basic that will do, and we'll get it back to the state lands office. And that will earmark that money so it won't be used for anything else. There's, it's on that resolution amounts. So that was earmarked, and then when you guys start your landfill closure, you can use it for, it has to be used for solid waste, but you know, you can use it for matching funds on your grant, the closure and stuff like that. For you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thank the Commissioners. Hopefully see ya. Somebody's gotta make a motion to approve it, the signature on the resolution.
I move that we approve.
Well, I want to say thanks, yeah. I second that.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion?
Oh, thanks.
You guys are welcome.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Son, I can pass this around.
Soon as everybody gets the sign down, we'll wrap it and go home for dinner. Thank you. I guess I didn't scrutinize the agenda as well as I should have before I accepted the motion. Did we get the Arbor Day proclamation, Eric?
It's on there.
Where's it at?
It's in your business.
Oh, there it is. Well, we just changed the agenda and started to catch it. Sorry, everybody.
It was your motion to change the agenda.
That is sure. It's gonna be a good dinner.
I agree on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I say, after tomorrow night, after Upton kind of up the signs, I'll get, have Becky get you guys a signed copy of it too, so you can have that on your file. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Moving on to Newcastle Recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How about Newcastle Recreation? We're giving a courtesy call to come visit with you tonight, so we're here to visit. Any questions, concerns, what can I do to help the council this evening?
So you have a thing in your packet, they weren't able to make it to your first workshop for budgeting.
And I do have to apologize, Stacy and I visited about it. There was a staff who I thought after my last visit, I thought I gave everybody handouts. Apparently I was one short, and it was the person that handed it the most, so that's on me. But I think we've got phone numbers and emails and everything. We do only check our snail mail, very, very short, I mean, right before the meeting because we only meet once a month. And we all have a full-time job except Misty, and she's a full-time mom, so that's two jobs in one, so we're kind of stretched thin to check for mail often. So email, text messages, phone calls definitely work better for people on our work.
Okay, that's good.
This is their request?
That's what I was gonna ask. So a couple of questions that I have is, what is the exact amount that you guys are requesting from the council?
Okay. Our secretary couldn't make it tonight, and her father couldn't make it tonight. One had to work and the other one had a window left open. So, as you can imagine with this weather, that was fine and dandy. I did not bring my notebook with me because I was not exactly sure on the amount. If you would like, what I can do is dig through, find out the absolute correct answer because I do not want to be misquoted, and I can email that to Stacy or call her with it so that you can get that number real quick. Because I just don't, I don't want to lie to the council or misleading you in any way that you're part of.
I just had a couple more questions. What is the Josh Mueller BB under?
Josh Mueller, BB, basketball.
Basketball, it's a basketball camp for the young people in our community. And we've been doing that for several years, and that is the one activity I can tell you that we usually get the most feedback on because it impacts so many young people in our community, both girls and boys. That has been a really stellar program so far.
And then the global support organization? Global support.
What date was that one then?
I don't know. All we have is.
It just says the global support organization, $1,250.
Global support, Misty?
I don't know, I was thinking maybe our insurance, but I don't know what that is.
I, once again, I don't want to lie to you. I will definitely find out and get back to the council or get back to Stacy and see if she can disseminate it to the council as quickly as possible.
Well, Paul, I can, I can look at this and say, being a past president of your organization for several times, that the budget for the recreation board has always been $38,500. And it's been that for years, and how, these people need to be kind of reeled in because the money's just not there to do something like $74,700. It's just not there.
And it's one of those things that we try to ask what we can. I mean, I understand that.
Yours is, yours is a tax, and it's always the same. It's never much different. So, and it's always, it's always been that one.
Can I elaborate for just a second? Up until three years ago, when Mr. Ross was taken off of our board, it had been $46,000. I think that we had discussed this with people before. When we went in and read the budget under a new treasurer, we found that the budget had been copied and pasted for several years. So what you see in front of you is a budget for anything that we've carried over and what we've given out. We don't just have people come to us, we're not their cash cow. There is a process, they have to fill out, there is guidelines, there, I mean, and we're a bit strict about our guidelines. We don't just say, here you go. No, you have guidelines, we look at them, and a lot of times we don't give them exactly what they ask for. What you see in front of you is what people are asking. That is not what we gave them, that is what they're asking. And that is just a true and honest, this is what our community is, is wanting. Even though we're only asking for, I don't, not only 70 whatever thousand it is, we may be only truly giving 40,000 of them. I mean, I can't tell you, but that's what they're asking for. That's not what we're giving, that's what they're asking for. And the need is there. This board is very active in our community, and there are a ton of things in this community that would not happen without this board. So we do appreciate your money, and what you're seeing is just what they're asking, that is not what we're giving, just so everybody is aware of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I have a question for you. So, this is what they came to you with. So what's the recreation, is that the amount that the recreation board is asking for then? Of the council?
I don't know what it says because I, I will be honest with you, I have not ever seen that, so I.
$74,700.
So this is, my take on this is that this, the $74,000 is what we were asked for throughout the year. I think what was requested, and yeah, if you read at the top, it says that's what was Post-pronoun was given that, the Josh Mueller was given that. The Arts Council has not been to us for a couple of years, so that would be 2,500 that would, would not be there.
I think what we need from you is what you are wanting from us.
What we spent for the fiscal year, is that what you want from us or what we just need to request?
We would like your request from us.
Okay.
Is that right?
That, that's what I would be.
This is, this is really kind of confusing.
Yeah. It's kind of misleading. Yeah, now that I'm looking at this, I don't disagree.
This does say that this is what's requested from you, but not you requesting from us.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that.
I mean, the current, the current amount, the time, there would be about 200% more in budget than I asked for the last time. So we just need to know the numbers.
Yeah, okay. Can I make this?
Sure.
Or can we get a copy of that? Or something?
That's my personal copy, you may have.
Okay, we'll take this back to our board and Stacy will get you a clear and, on this budget, I guess, and go over this together as a, as a whole, and then.
Do you guys give funds elsewhere or just by?
No, last year we have talked about doing the, like the Brew Fest and stuff downtown, and when I called, it was just a nightmare, I'm not even gonna lie. All of the stuff that you have to have, we were trying to bring something downtown that we could make a little bit of money and use our downtown businesses and utilize what we have here. And I know that we had kind of talked about stuff like that, but our goal is to try to get something going. We have not hit that point because we're right smack dab in the middle of people bringing requests to us, and we don't, we get several requests every meeting, so.
Do these organizations have any fundraising housing?
They are required to do, I think it's 25% for an annual funding, and I think it's 15% for a one-time funding. So they, they are required, like I said, there is a detailed process that I have to go through.
And if I could real quick, in that same stream, what we've tried to gear this towards now is we like to see those people, if we're going to give them money, we like to see them invest that in their own fundraising, fundraising, fundraiser, where it's not just us giving them the gift. They can take that money and then buy chili, or something that actually benefits the community, it isn't just to hear, go on a trip or whatever. If we're really trying to gear this towards doing something positive for the community to where they have skin in the game, to where they're making money, at the same time, we're helping them to get there. It's kind of like seed money, if you would, and that's what we're trying to do. And so far, this, this last year, I think we've been successful with that.
Thank you.
When you're checking that, it'd be good to kind of compare on what you was talking about, what you paid out. This is what everyone's wanting, and then each year, you know, your, your request and what you pay out, and comparison.
So would it be easier if we did one of what we actually paid out and what we actually were requesting? Two different copies?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
We have another workshop on the 29th, I think it'll be a little bit about two or three days.
Oh, we know about it, we'll have it before now.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Daniel.
Citizens in Business, number three, Billy Jackson, Newcastle Ice Association.
How are you guys doing today?
Doing fine, Billy, how you doing?
It's handy. Had a big weekend earlier, so I'm, I'm surviving. I'm Billy Jackson, president of Newcastle Ice Association. This is Mr. Scott Wyer, vice president. We're here today to kind of give you a little rundown on the season. It was a very short season. We were able to get one birthday party and about two, I guess, probably two half weekends out of the deal. Pretty good ice. Each weekend we had, they were open, we had about 50, 60 people show up to the range. Everybody loved it, they were, you know, when we hit a warm spell, ice would go away, and then cold snap would hit, and they would be skating. Ice isn't, isn't safe yet, so. But there's a lot of desire to skate about the community. It's a pretty, and back in December, we were getting a little question about skating. But we are here today also to kind of express our apologies for not getting cleared out as quick as we might have been able to. Our board consists of four people, and we all have full-time jobs, that's, you know, a lot of us are part of boards and stuff, and it's, to get schedules to meet up, it's typical. We were able to relocate the small enclosed trailer this last week. Conex, that we first year of using Conex, it was a very good asset for what we're going to use it for. We still got plans for it to.
What is Conex?
A shipping container.
Oh.
We have the 20 by eight, small shipping container up there. We're using it for rental skate storage, and also our future friends are splitting it, dividing it for storage, and half of it for concession stand. And we haven't, we, I've contacted a couple people, one person who helped us unload it and move it, and his schedules haven't met up to, to get it moved, and finding a place and kind of issue to store it. So we were, we moved in there with the understanding of, of in the season, moving it out and bringing it back in. With it loaded, it is kind of a, it's a pretty good journey to do so. So we were gonna see about requesting if we could figure out a place on the property there to store it. It's in a great place where it's at, not sure, you know, in summertime, I don't see the park much, so I don't know if it's in the way where it's at, or if we could move it over to a grassy spot out of the way.
It can probably stay where it is for this year. We can look at it next year and see if we can do something else. Just please understand, we're not responsible for any, any damage, so.
Of course. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, going into a, like a storage unit, we were looking at enclosed trailers and the shipping containers, and the shipping container, it's, it's pretty bulletproof, so that's kind of why I'm leaning towards that. As far as manolons and stuff, yeah, you can spray paint with it, you can spray over, spray paint over the spray paint, so it's no big deal. But the additions that we're looking for is, it's like a sport, a shipping container, it'll be dressed up, it'll look pretty, real, pretty, it'll have a nice curb appeal. We're done with it, the door and the window, concession and stuff. But again, thank you guys for everything you guys put forth to us. City Crew's done a lot with the, the water lines, electricity, lights and everything, the warm hot T L S. I wish I could say that we had a good test this year, but we just didn't get much use out of it this year. Is there for next year, it'll be the longer season next year.
Thank you guys for what you bring.
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Last winter, I saw a couple, I think they were from Ohio, who bought and put in their backyard a rink that was not ice. And, and there's some, and their friends and everything, they started hockey teams, and they, and they skated on this stuff. I don't, I don't know what this stuff is, but have you seen something like that?
Deadwood's got some.
That's what Newcastle needs.
Yeah, it, we looked, we looked, we looked into, when we were looking through the rink purchase, the initial rink purchase, we looked into it, I'm not, I can't recall what it's called. It's, it does skate differently than the real ice. It's not romantic as the real ice, but as far as wear and carry it, they wear down fairly quick. To replace it is an issue.
Have you looked at the ones in Deadwood?
No. I don't like Deadwood much.
Good.
I had at one point, Billy, tried to get you guys together with maybe some of the folks up in Buffalo. They have a really, like, nice permanent structure, and they, I think they got it through grants, and they, they might help you guys if, if you're wanting to look at a more permanent structure in the future. I could, I could run down some numbers for you, if you'd like.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We're, as I mentioned before, we're kind of, a board of four people with a stretch group team, and there's one that might be relocating soon, so a board of threes kind of doesn't work great. We are looking out, we are reaching out to other organizations. This year, we use FCC LA for our skate rentals, the couple weekends are open. The students did great, and they're, they shared real interest in coming back next year to do that, which really makes things more functional, so us four can really go through some thinking in the ice, set up, tear down, and they command the kind of day-to-day operation, based a lot more manual for us anyways. But yeah, we are looking out for, we're kind of looking for some other organizations to kind of step in, and the community wants it here, and see if anybody else would be also interested in kind of helping out with kind of the day-to-day stuff, so.
And to be fair, Billy, this year was really weird for weather. I mean, it wasn't a great year for ice rink.
No, I'm not gonna complain about it.
Maybe like warm weather would be a good year, but I don't think so.
Today, guys, it was hard, but everything else, I'm not complaining. Is there any other question you can, you can.
Who, we just get in touch with you, we got some space to donate?
Uh, yeah, myself, or Mr. Wyer, if you can, you know, those, sure. Easiest way, Facebook, run a Facebook, or my number's out there, most people got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Citizens Business in Berber, or in writing, Weston County Museum District, sewer averaging. April 1, 2024, Dear City and Newcastle, Newcastle, Weston County Museum District promotes tourism for Weston County through the use of brochures, pamphlets, the website, and Facebook. The district would like to request a sewer forgiveness for the months of April through September. We appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Cindy Dicert, Weston County Museum District.
I want to ask the city clerk, how much money have we talked about?
She should have really stated it as sewer averaging, like, for the residents of Newcastle, they go on sewer averaging for the lawns, for the water in the lawns, and, but most of our commercial or businesses don't get that unless they request it through a letter. We've done it for them before.
That she wasn't asking for zero?
Correct.
Okay.
I move that we approve the Weston County Museum District for their summertime sewer forgiveness, for sewer averaging.
I second that. Motion and second, any further discussion?
I think they're a great organization, and I, I, I'm glad that we're able to help them, and anyway, we can't assume these.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to Citizens in writing, number two, we have Captain Ball 24-hour catering permit. So this 24-hour catering permit that under, and by virtue of the provisions of Section 12-4-502, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Leverage Control Laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the sum of $20 paid by Tanya Christensen doing business as Captain Ball of the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, hereby license, permits, and authorize Tanya Christensen, owner of Captain Ball, to sell alcohol and malt leverages in and upon premises of the Weston County Senior Se... Of the Weston County Senior Center, six twenty-seven Iron Street, Newcastle, Wyoming. An event more specifically described as follows, Wild Turkey Federation banquet. This license for catering permit is for one term of one day only, beginning on nine A M of the fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-four, to nine A M the fifth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
Now, remember, I move we approve this application for.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
And it would have been interesting to see how many votes may have changed because of Gordon's actions. Because of the response of their communities after those bills were passed, specifically the gun-free zone bill. I think that, I think that we would have very much seen a change in votes on that one. I think you would have seen more nay votes on that than you had before.
Are, so you're saying that, that some folks were counting on the governor veto in that one?
I very much one hundred percent think that especially school districts, courthouses, places like that were banking that the governor was gonna go, no way are we letting guns in these areas. And I think that their response afterwards may or may not have swayed some of those representatives and senators to vote a different way because the response was strong.
Moving on to old business, we have certification of recognition for I mean, bickers. This recognition is for her generosity to Newcastle with her donation towards the Pippin Wall period.
Yeah.
Which will eventually get done.
Yes, thank you so very much. Yes, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
When it's set up, I'm right, when it's set up, I think we should be the first to get it. White Hill Energy Franchise of Green.
When do we have to roll on that slide?
Scott, I think we have pre-readings on.
The franchise expires on August eighth.
And we have to have the pre-readings.
Yeah.
This is going to table, does anybody have any questions on it? We have completed it.
Well.
I know we had questions on.
This is fifteen years.
I want to just, because we can get, considering how fast the inflation is hitting him and his public works program. Is there any way that we can make this in like three to five years increments and take a look at the inflation?
I think you could, the thing with this is that it has the pass on. And there's a whole process by which. They actually bill and then the pass on is actually passed back into the city. And it has the whole service commission involvement, it has a whole process actually getting that done. The thing that I wanted to at least ask them, and I thought there might be someone here tonight at least to discuss it. Was for one, in here they have, in addition, the company shall be allowed to reduce the amount of any gross revenues by any amounts determined to be uncollectible. It's kind of broad, I just wanted to see what they meant or at least they intended by that. Can we invite them to come for the next meeting and then maybe we can discuss some of this?
I'd like to, we do this first and then have, I agree with, I will, I'd like to have them show up and talk to them. We've got a lot of time before office.
Well, they did come a few times.
Oh, God.
Looks beautiful, you know.
We can probably give Lynn a call. Cause that's our contact is Lynn, I can't think of her last name, what's Lynn's last name, dear lord? We can give her a call if we want to, and see if she can come in our next meeting or researches.
I move to table it.
I start that.
Right, we'll table this until, we can get in touch with Lynn and see what, let her know what our next council meetings are and which one she can attend. I think we need to table the joint dispatch board resubstantiation as well, because I was told by chief today that the joint power board still has not been overhauled.
Okay.
So one more thing for the E B C's broadcast.
Of all the, the properties and everything that Mr. Hoskins that I've looked at. They all have happened to be prior dates that then were put into the court system to then be auctioned off. As of right now, the business is still not open. And from what I can tell, he doesn't actually own any property. So it looks as though there probably isn't a reason to actually go forward with certifying the judgment. And if that changes, then I will address the council as such, but. And also received two phone calls since the. Since the, I believe it was the newsletter journal released basically an article on this whole judgment from two other people. Trying to figure out where he is and what he owns and they were also contractors of some sort.
So do we have anything with our insurance coverage type of laws? We should look into that too, see. Since we tried it all together, I think. So city clerk's gonna check and see since we tried every avenue if anything with our insurance coverage is lost.
That's just too good to be true.
Moving on to new business, I'm going Arbor Day proclamation. Tree City U S A official proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, in the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than, than a million trees in the Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting heating and fuel costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us proper, or giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values and enhance the economic vitality of the business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source, a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Hamal Cherry, Mayor of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four as Arbor Day in the City of Newcastle, Wyoming. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and business. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So dated this fifteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
So I see one of the tree board members in attendance today. I think the tree board and our arborist Travis Peterson worked really hard this year to put together the Arbor Day celebration. And Travis did some research and found out there was an abandoned street called Cherry Street over by Washington Park. So we were gonna plant a whole bunch of different varieties of cherry trees along the edge of the park. And then some of the tree board members have been pretty pivotal and. And, you know, Caleb's on the natural resources district, so he was able to source some stock. And then Travis has been working pretty hard to find some of the local nurseries in the hills. And there's also gonna be a special planning for, for Dr. Fromm's. He liked strange trees, so I don't know what we came up with, Jamie might be able to help me, but. We were trying to find a smoke tree to plant, cause he liked some oddball stuff. And we thought that Washington Park might be a good microclimate where that type of tree would be able to flourish. So, and there has not been a Arbor Day tree planted in Washington Park up to this point. So that's why we chose that location.
So you're gonna have a celebration on that day?
Yep. I, I think I got penciled in on a calendar, so I can be involved in, and then I believe that we're gonna have some of the elementary school kids.
I think that was still in question.
We're trying to figure out, it might be elementary school or it could be some kids from high school, but there's gonna be.
That was cool last year, I went to that.
Some young folks coming to join in maybe.
How about those great people from the state of Wyoming Forest, your department, and then jumped up and called in.
Oh, I'm sure you told them.
Just David.
And even if the school doesn't work out and stuff, then I mean, I got a whole herd of kids, so then maybe I'll screen them, you know? So, but anyway, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Upton, E M S.
Oh, yes, so I attended a workshop in October of last year. Because the E M S situation has been a problem in our whole county for, for a while now. So since October, Upton City Council has been working on it. And they came up, which I think they had a program in place. Where they would provide reimbursement for people that wanted to take the E M T test and serve in their community. So I got an email from Nick, Nick Trandle, the mayor of Upton. And he also, I talked to clerk Millar today. And she sent a copy of the Volunteer Fire Department Ambulance Service Emergency Medical Technician Education Plan and Breakdown. So I could pass that on to the rest of the council if you guys wanted to look at it. They have a local person, Georgie Nash, she's actually a certified EMS instructor. So finding somebody local to the community that was able to provide the course on site greatly cut the cost of putting her on the course. And then Upton said that they, they would pay or reimburse citizens from the community of Upton to attend the course. And they would do this upfront with this breakdown. So then, but then other people are welcome to join. They were capping the class of twelve people. And they had some people that wanted to come in from the county. Anybody who came in from the county was required to pay for their own class, so. This was just specifically for citizens of their community. But I just wanted to share it with the council because I thought it was a really great idea. I believe that Attorney Hughes also works with Upton. He, he helped them on some of the particulars involved in instituting this program. But he said that over a dozen local folks and a couple of others from elsewhere in the county have already expressed interest in registering and have signed up. And so by the town of Upton paying the upfront cost and paying for an instructor, providing the course here in town. That seems to at least temporarily resolve the issue with folks volunteering for EMS. And we went from zero local E M Ts as of January first, two thousand twenty-four, to two current E M Ts with potentially over a dozen by the end of the course. So where we're running into a rip wall with getting people that want to attend here in Newcastle. And we're not, they're not able to adequately staff in the area. This incentive kind of helped spur people in wanting to volunteer. So it would be something that we'd have to figure out in our own community and how this would fit us. But I think that it's worth looking into. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but, and I don't even know which committee would have to meet to decide.
Well, the, the question I have is that Campbell County already said that they can't take volunteers. So how would that apply?
Um, is Campbell County covering Upton or are they staffing their own ambulance in Upton?
They, the ambulance here goes and covers Upton, and Upton doesn't have anybody. So they don't, they won't take volunteers. So.
Yeah, they do like.
They have employees.
Upton have their own EMS outside of Campbell County.
So they're working in conjunction with Campbell County. But the thing is, is the reason we don't have people to help staff the ambulance, we're, we're not really asking for volunteers. We're trying to get people certified, so then maybe they'll take full-time employment from the company. And then that would allow us to have a full staff here in Newcastle. And potentially create jobs.
That's the reimbursement.
Um, that's a good question. That would probably have been the, the big number that I should have been prepared for the meeting, but.
So is the reimbursement after they work for the ambulance service for a year?
Uh, it's upon, it's upon completion of the course and passing the E M T exam is how, is how Upton was handling it. And then they also do pre-screening and, and provide a pre-test by their local fire department and ambulance service. But anyway, I just wanted to present the bare bones of this to the council to see if there's any support in trying to come up with a program of our own. Which I think is a great idea to try to offset the, the problems with staffing in our community. Because every time Campbell County Ambulance Service comes here, it's always the same thing. It's, we don't have any interest from the. It's, we don't have any interest from the city of Newcastle. We can't staff the ambulance. And that's why they have to send a crew to write or they have to offset it somehow in backfill. So if we actually had some people that were willing to work for their service, then they probably wouldn't have to send people from Campbell County over here to cover. If we could generate some employees for them, which is what they're looking for here in our community, that live in our community. Because I mean, that was another thing too, is like with all the ideas that were rolling around, some communities even provide housing for people that are interested in pursuing a career in EMS for their community. There's all kinds of different ideas about it. And then another big one was whether we were gonna approach the county commissioners about getting an EMS district put on the ballot so that-
Well, I was gonna wait to committee reports, but I did send out an email to all the county commissioners and I got one response back from Council or Commissioner Todd, Nathan Todd, saying that he wasn't able to make it that day due to the being tele. But no one else has responded to me. And today when I was at the courthouse and I talked with City Clerk, Becky Hadlock, she said that they've already made, or she said none of them are probably gonna show because they already made a deal of giving the ambulance the three percent that they asked for.
So they're not interested in putting it on the ballot at all?
They're not interested in having a district. They're not, yeah, they're not interested, from what I was told, and I didn't hear it from all of them, I just heard it from a clerk, that they're not interested in meeting because they already met with the ambulance service and said they can do three percent.
Three percent of what?
What they asked for. The ambulance asked for three percent more of whatever they're thinking.
Well, if the council would approve, I would get myself put onto the next county commissioner meeting agenda. And I could go and talk to them in person. Of course, tomorrow's their meeting, but they won't let anybody just jump on the agenda at last minute. So it would probably have to be their next meeting, which would be the beginning of May, I believe. But if the council's in favor of that-
To talk to them about a district, like four district ambulance districts?
Yeah, and I could also talk to Upton because I think that it's required the two communities in the county approach the commission about adding something to the ballot. So that would give me a little bit of time before next month.
I think it would be a good idea.
I think that we should let the citizens decide if they want a district and they wanna pay more taxes.
I think something, another step needs to be done because we've talked to commissioners, what, two years now about a district? Or just trying to come up with some kind of better financial plan? So I think we should get on their ballot for the next meeting.
So are we gonna have the city council, who's gonna take care of it?
I can email Becky Hadlock tomorrow, or tonight, and see if she can get us put on the next meeting, which would probably be the-
Haven't put him on there, he's gone home.
Yeah, well, he's got the Upton information. Yeah.
I think that's good.
I'll never put, I'll copy you on the email.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I had.
Going under committee reports, I was gonna just talk about what we just talked about with Commissioner's response to the email. I don't have anything else.
We had a water and sewer committee.
And there was sanitation too. Does anybody wanna report on any other committee meetings? Or are we gonna keep going?
Well, we need to make a report. There was a lot of stuff covered in the water and sewer. So the water and sewer committee met, it was a Friday of last week. And we looked at water sales outside the city limits. The committee was in favor of making a recommendation to the council to approach the city attorney about working on the legal judgment and putting together a plan to allow for out-of-city water sales. So I would make a motion that we have Attorney Hughes work on an out-of-city limits water sales ordinance.
Now, part of our committee meeting was that we wanted to sell city the water outside the city, but we in no way want that sale to be, to block us in. In other words, if we-
We have a motion, we have a second, and then we can-
Okay, I'll say that, thank you.
No, I'm just saying-
No, I mean, I was wrong.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and now go ahead, Tom.
Okay, so we wanna do this, but we wanna do it so that we do not block ourselves in on sales further down the line. For instance, if people up here were doing all the work on eighty-five going south, and he gets his water in his meter and his permit, just selling to him, forget his name now, what's his name? Is there any? Yeah, Josh Reniger. We want to be able to sell our water beyond him so that he doesn't block us and he becomes, and he can start selling off.
So maybe we need to have-
Just, just-
Attorney, people with either break or get with break and return.
Maybe so.
That would be prudent, Madam Mayor. So the idea is that we're going to have people that accept our water out of city limits, adhere to our chapter twenty-six ordinances, so that we have the right to shut their water off if we need to, or we have the right to, you know, do what we need to do to make sure that it isn't being abused. So they would have to, that's some of the stuff that we need to work out with Attorney Hughes.
Would you set up, is that you're available for that?
When's the next year of water?
Is there one set up?
No, we haven't set one up yet.
We can get that set up. But with the motion on the table, all the favors they ask?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
This is gonna open us up to receive more revenue that we weren't generating before. We also talked about a cash plan remaining at the, next to the High Sixteen that we're probably gonna end up having to put on the intended use plan for two thousand twenty-six. There's a chunk of cash on the main that's a dead-end line that probably needs to be replaced, but it's a future project. Then we also looked at the maximum time to request sewer forgiveness, like somebody brought up at one of the prior council meetings. And the Public Works Supervisor, Greg, he presented a draft ordinance to be included in chapter twenty-six. And we just needed to update the language. And it'll also address the length of time allowed for sewer forgiveness plan. But it needs a couple things tweaked on it. But I think we need to make a motion to add that ordinance.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, I, my thought was we would recommend the change when we change-
When we bring word twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can do it all at once rather than making several different motions.
Oh, yeah, that's item number six on the notes. Then radio replacement. Radios currently cost two hundred dollars a piece. And we have a bunch of radios that are getting damaged. So it might be a good idea for us to come up with some kind of an ordinance when we work on chapter twenty-six in addition that would require citizens that break and damage the radios to have to help with the cost of said radio. I mean, when I was still working for the city, we had people that were sharing them off with plow blades. Then we're having a bunch of people that are doing siding in town and they're cutting stuff off the antennas and itching them in with the garbage. And that costs the city two hundred dollars a pop when we ruin those. So it would be prudent for us to do something about recouping those costs.
But we also talked about that when people get a building permit, that they'd be informed that that's there and that this is the law. You don't mess around with our radios.
I mean, all I would do is like place a simple call down to the city office and have one of the meter people go and remove it until the work's done and then put it back, you know? Instead of ruining a two hundred dollar item. So then, of course, we did talk about the chapter twenty-six changes. We're gonna have to work with someone on that. And then there were some updates on the Seventh Avenue and Duff Avenue projects that we got passed. Seventh Avenue is coming up soon, right? And if I start to flounder, Greg, it could just bang me out a little bit. We had some trees that were up on Seventh Avenue that the Tree Advisory Board was trying to save. There's some beautiful silver maples up there. We had the arborist that talked about hiring a licensed contractor that could have tried to look at the trees to determine whether they were savable or not. He's decided that he doesn't wanna look at the trees for whatever reason. And so it's looking like the trees are not gonna be able to be saved. It would be too big of a liability risk on the city the way that the project is moving forward for those trees to remain.
Could those be sold as lumber?
Oh, I don't know.
I can do it.
Okay.
Hardwood maple is pretty high.
Yeah.
No, good idea.
Yeah. You can make some tabletops and desks out of it. And then the Duff Avenue Sewer Project. We'd like to have a project engineer begin drafting a bid documents for the project. And that way, if you receive the permit to construct, we can open the project for bidding as soon as possible. But it was looking like that might not happen till later this fall, which when you're working with sewer isn't as big of an issue as when you're working in water. So that's all I have to report on the water and sewer committee.
Thank you. Anything else under committee reports?
Department head reports, City Book Treasurer Stacy Henry. All I have is that I've kinda still been working on budget numbers. And to remind you guys, budget workshop on the twenty-ninth, starting at five.
Good.
How do we go to the Public Works Supervisor, Greg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, we had budgeted for a mini excavator to replace one of our backhoes in this budget. We waited until later in the budget year to make sure we have the money still to purchase that. And we do. So I would request we advertise and open for bid, CAT three oh seven point five mini excavator or approved vehicle. Unfortunately, Engineer Bartlett was not in today. So the bid due date will be May fifteenth. And the bid opening will be May fifteenth at two P.M. And the bid award will be at the next council meeting, it'll be May twentieth.
Are you open for a used one?
If we buy used, we still have to bid. So we still have to through the bid process.
But it doesn't say anything about new or used, it just says-
Yeah, no, this is a new machine because we can get government discounts when we buy new machines. And actually, the new government discounts we receive and some of the other discounts we get by buying new actually offsets the cost of buying a machine that would be like, have two hundred hours on it.
Did we already did a bid or a motion for this bid?
No, we have not. This is my initial request for motion to advertise for bid and open this item for bidding.
I make a motion, we open the mini hydraulic excavator, approve it, approve it.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman. Other than that, are there any questions for my reports?
I don't have any questions on the reports, Greg. I did have a citizen ask about garbage cans between Stampede Street and the Port of Entry. And I didn't know if you made any further progress on that?
We have a missed your budget for the doggy bags. And there'll be a ten gallon garbage can in those places. We plan for four of them on that route.
Okay, is there anything that we could put there temporarily until we get those installed? There's been some of those walkers that have been talking to me about it. They just really like a place to put their doggy bags.
Unfortunately, the only we have is ninety-five gallon cans and I'm afraid they'd even blow away or get filled up by garbage from people that don't have any garbage service.
Okay. Will I go through something, tell them?
Probably on the process for the Kell Park water line. Kell Park water line? Oh, they're being constructed now. We should have all the plumbing done tomorrow. And we have to get an electrician to do wiring for our mag-
Great, excellent.
So maybe depending on the electrician's time schedule, we wanna get all our parts in place first before we call him and have him show up to do his work, so. We're hoping by the end of the week.
That was one of the things that I was gonna ask about too. There's been a lot of people asking about the RV though.
We were, we were about that RV though. We poured concrete last week for the pad. We set the building today. We went through where we're placing parts inside because you have to have a backhoe preventer and automatic drain and stuff like this we have to put in the building.
That was something else I got asked today was about the historic rock wall up at the top of South Summit. What's going on with that and if there's been any changes?
Honestly, we're looking for funding. And with the street budget rate is, we really don't have the money to do it ourselves. We did find a grant, it was only a twenty-five percent grant. So we still gotta come up with seventy-five percent of two hundred and eighteen thousand.
That's a whole lot of cookies.
That's a whole lot of cookies.
So currently, that's where we're at. I'm looking for a better grant, so.
And then the folks at the state or the Western County Historical Society, have they been able to come up with any other ideas?
Dr. Jordan actually called me and I forgot to call him back Friday, so I'll get ahold of him and see.
So I might have had an update on what they were?
Yeah. He called me on a day off and I forgot to call him back that day. I apologize.
I don't think they can do so much, though. I mean, you're waiting on, we've talked to them.
Yeah. The city's gonna have to come up with the funding and put into the grants and things like that. Unfortunately, there is no money like, to me, this would be a street project, so the end of the street budget. Unfortunately, the only thing that we have available for funding would be sidewalks or bike paths or walking paths. The number really applies to retaining walls along pathways.
Now, if it's being a homeowner's wall, and if all the part doesn't contain a homeowner's insurance?
Right now, it's the homeowner's responsibility because we don't want, we're trying to find another solution to preserve the historic wall.
Is their insurance covered is the question, you know?
But insurance may cover just a concrete wall.
Yeah, they want to replace what's there.
So.
We're trying to preserve the historical.
Well, the idea was that we could possibly handle it the way that we did the wall on the corner East Wentworth and South Summit. And then I thought that there was talks with the homeowners and they were amicable to the to letting us do the same process, but then that would require us to.
Of course they are.
Behind the wall and then it's a two hundred and eighteen dollar.
You still have premium money.
Yeah, the two hundred and eighteen.
They hold up right now, council is the money.
So are we just gonna leave it like, I mean, what else is there to do? We're just gonna leave it here?
We can set up a temporary wall with the current blocks that we do have.
I just feel like it's gonna continue.
Two by four, we do have the two by four blocks that we could put on the sidewalk temporarily in front of the couple.
I just don't think that looks safe.
I think something needs to be done because if we keep continuing our moisture or rain, it's, I think the wall's gonna come down.
I think the whole wall's, the wall would, the council's budget be?
I would say put something in front of it to stay a little bit for them.
Some, as much as you can.
We do have the blocks and we do have blocks purchased.
With the understanding that it is temporary.
Yes.
But I think we need to do something just to to show that we're doing something.
And to go over that sidewalk up.
You're talking about the big concrete blocks?
Yeah.
So we cover the sidewalk?
Yes, or kind of four foot or two foot of the sidewalk.
Forty seven inches. Couldn't use sidewalk, but we could.
Now the sidewalk's over six foot.
So you still have about four foot of sidewalk if we move the remnants out of the way and set some blocks there?
Yes.
Because I think that's one of the big concerns of the citizens is that the sidewalk's been blocked off for a long time and they'd like to be able to use the sidewalk.
At least we have the sidewalk.
It looks unsafe right now because it's corded off, so that makes you think there's, it's gonna fall down.
It couldn't, today it couldn't, ten years.
I know. I understand that.
That's why we get.
We just need to, like I think, do something positive.
You could drill holes and screw anchors in there with place and hold the wall up. What are you doing?
That would have to be the homeowner's. It's their property.
Is the sidewalk your property?
No, no, it's technically a stage that we need to.
We'll talk with the homeowners about putting the temporary wall there. I think something just to help so not more falls around. Anything else for city supervisor?
I have no further questions.
Anybody else? Moving on to police chief, he is unable to be at the meeting tonight. He did ask that, he really wishes he could be here to talk to you guys in regards to body cams and the tasers. He did send me an email which Stacy printed off, so it will every day as a copy. For the body cams, which is the one that shows the, on the front, the twenty-five thousand and hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents. The body cams, what information I have is that the ones that they have now are probably around ten years old, if not older. They're very out of date, old software. The software is having glitches where they can't get some of the videos off of their body cams. They're activated on their own because they don't, it doesn't have the retention that it needs. So they're switching on whenever. So I'm sure there's more wrong with the with the body cams that they have now. But the new ones obviously will have updated software. The video quality will be much better quality. It will be easier to download and to share with county attorney as needed. And he said that he was, he was considering purchasing the cameras all at once since there is money left in his budget. The next item, the tasers, won't be invoiced until after July first. And they let you make yearly payments on them. You also get a five-year subscription to evidence.com, which is an evidence management software. He says there's a lot to explain. He wished he could be here, but he can't. On the tasers, he was, the ones that we have now are twelve to fifteen years old, definitely out of date. The reliability is very low. Some of them, the displays on the screen aren't even working. And usually it tells you the battery power, the countdown timer, five to zero, countdown five, four, three. It's not even displaying on some of the ones that they have. And it's the ones that they have are a single shot. The new ones, obviously, all of that stuff would work, plus it's a dual shot, which would be better protection and.
It sounds like a dangerous situation. I mean, if they were to have to use the tasers.
And they have in the past.
If they didn't function.
Who's last resident was tasered in this house a while ago?
Actually, I know some of this historic data, so.
Yes.
The first taser deployment was on a canine that was aggressive towards a police officer. So they tased.
Did it work?
Yeah, the dog got up and started yelping and ran away to leave that.
They've had to use it in probation pool and a couple other instances, so they they've had to use them. I think with the body cams, obviously, that's a huge thing to help with liability. And they're dealing with someone who says that something didn't happen or an officer did something, but it didn't, so that kind of, there's so much more with that with having a body cam in every aspect of their performance. So he's looking to have a motion to get. If you look in, you're seeing there's seven.
Plus the quote expires today, Madam Mayor, so we have to take action on this.
It says four fifteen.
Yeah, well, I'm not quite sure. He might have talked with them to get a longer date because I know he's working with them on the exile one as well, or the taser one as well. So the, for the tasers, he's looking at getting seven of them for the estimated forward tax is thirty thousand and four hundred and fifty dollars. And the estimated tax for the body cams is twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents.
So one of these is a sixty-month contract, wait.
I'm sorry, what?
One of them was a sixty-month contract. You're gonna put around nine?
He said that the, he's purchasing the cameras all at once since there's money in the budget for it. The tasers won't be invoiced until after July first, and they let you make yearly payments on them. And you also get the five-year subscription.
Well, I move that we buy the body cam and go with that one for sure. And then we go with the tasers. If if he's gonna take it with the yearly payment thing, if we take it as a yearly payment after the first of July. But I think they need the body cam, that's, that's, that just saves you from a lot of legal hassle right there.
I second. I need you to replace this equipment.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the purchase of the body cams and the tasers, as long as the tasers are the yearly payments sent to July first, correct?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that is all that I have from all posts besides what we already talked about about the joint dispute, we said they're not tabled as they didn't discuss it yet. Moving on, the city attorney, Delwan Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this week I sent out an email to the council basically stating and showing what Jeremy D. defense rockets I wanted to see in the MOU. In that MOU, what I wanted to do is basically just some direction from the council as to what they would like to see in the MOU.
I think the only thing is the, and I think we talked about this generally, is that when it comes to set plans that we make sure it's not something that the city has already applied for unless it's something that's not gonna affect what the city applied for.
This is why you have been sitting here all night?
Mm-hmm.
You have incredible patience. I really appreciate you as a group. Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Jerry. Oh, thank you, Madam. I thought she was here because of that.
Well, basically, I mean, whenever there's a liability section that's granted to who I represent, I usually take that, obviously, and put it in there as a two. I would just basically end up drafting some other language that we have in prior MOUs that say, you know, liability is only in certain circumstances, we do not waive our liability that the city.
So Delwan, I have a question. Do you think that the information that's here is adequate for the MOU to be signed with Ben's Rockets?
I think it in part is, I guess, one thing I would like to at least have outlined so that my understanding is, you know, encompasses this whole agreement is, what exactly is it that's going to be happening between the two entities? I realize that we've talked about this, you know, a few times, but it was never really stated as to what the city's going to be doing and what Ben's Rockets is going to be doing.
Well, it seems to me like the city was needing some help in looking for grants because we haven't been working on it. And that the Ben's Rockets would fill the void so that we can find some grants to get this done. And we want the project to continue to move forward in a timely fashion. So it takes a village and we need people that are willing and able to help navigate some of the grant process.
I think the other thing too is that we're looking at doing a pump bike track and a skateboarding park and Ben's Rockets. I think it's gonna be kind of taking more of the role and action and not so-called ownership of the making the curves or however you wanna say that part of the track. I guess I would just say that in that aspect, because you also have on there the project that Ben's Rockets Inc. is more suited to hire out. I still think that that communication needs to be with the city supervisor to, I don't know, regards to that. So there's like two aspects to this park, well, three really, because there's also a walking path for for maybe parents or just people who want to walk a little different trail. But the bike pump park would be basically more maintained and built and start by the Ben's Rockets. Am I saying that correctly?
That's kind of what we're here to clarify or see.
Yeah.
We really see a separates, separation from the pump track part from the walking path part of the park.
Have you seen a map of it, a picture of it?
I haven't. So the, I mean, the Ben's Rockets are gonna be using it a lot, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, I mean, I think that's part of the involvement here, right, of the Ben's Rockets is, and it's gonna be a city park, but they're gonna be using it a lot and they're helping with some of the maintenance and I'll keep the park up to a certain point, right?
Sure.
So. I mean, there has to be collaboration if we're gonna hire a contractor to come and, you know, I'm sure that a lot of that, that funding or that responsibility is gonna come from the city, right? So it has to be kind of a collaboration.
Just what we were wondering about on that. Sorry, Tyler.
Oh, it's okay. Sorry, I got a big mouth.
That's right. So what we were wondering is exactly what, how much of that role that we need to take? And how much the city is wanting to take.
We need to have a parks committee meet with these people.
I have a question. Could we clarify MOU?
Can I have a book of understanding?
Okay, that's one.
It's kind of like a.
Concrete.
Yes. So we could, we could do that to have the Parks Committee sit down and actually meet. If we can, it would be smart to have the sewer committee and then follow the parks or parks follow the sewer and have the attorney involved with both of these meetings.
Make it a day for it.
Yeah. So we can get our schedules together to make sure because, you know, if there's, you know, if you're looking to hire out, is that gonna, you know, who's paying for that kind of stuff? I think we need to really work that out because even though it's Ben's Rockets, it's gonna be open to whomever to use it. So you gotta. So I think maybe we can, that would probably be the best time to do it.
Yeah.
We'll come up with some dates. Maybe we can meet when the meeting's over since you waited this long. But on another note, the city supervisor and I, we did talk to Matt with Tallgrass because I didn't even think about this and I don't think anybody else said anything, but Greg was like, where are the restrooms? So we talked to Matt about the first park shelter that's closest to the handicap parking upset. Do you remember the, being more of a restroom than a shelter?
Actually, we did discuss this in the Parks Committee. We discussed making one of the shelters a restroom at the Parks Committee meeting.
Right, and then Greg and I talked to Matt and, but I didn't talk.
Oh, about actually making the recommendations that the Parks Committee came up with?
Yeah, so we talked with Matt.
That was a design flaw for sure.
Well, there's lots of trees. But yeah, we can, we can set up, you know, sewer and all that, so you don't have to come back to work after four, does that work? Does that sound good, that work for the Parks Committee?
Madam Mayor, would you like to get a take your decision tomorrow?
Uh, yeah. That would be great. All right, anything else? Do you have time?
No, I have something for the Ben's Rockets. Thank you guys for sticking it out and working so hard. And I really wanna see this happen. I mean, I think it's gonna be a great thing for our community. And you guys have proven to be more than willing to put in a lot of hard work, so we appreciate that.
Since you're here, why don't you tell us, you having some bike races in two thousand and twenty-four? What you got going?
Oh, so now he's gonna tell.
Now I have to come forward and just say it's called up. So our scheduled events for two thousand and twenty-four, we have the caveman. Run, it's called a fun run, but it doesn't sound fun. It's a twenty K, ten K, and a five K event that's coming up in May. After that, we're celebrating our tenth year at the Foreign V Trail System. So it's two thousand and fourteen, we started dating trails there, this is the tenth year. And we kind of open trail day where we're inviting locals and people from the area to come visit our trails. We'll have trail tours, group rides, and non-bikes and all that. As far as bike races, we probably won't do any of that until, say, maybe the event is on Main Street again. Going up to Hospital Hill, that's probably about the extent of what we have for events. So we're at a turning point in our plan, but we're still seeing how many events we wanna have and how much we wanna do of development of infrastructure for it. And it's playing that dichotomy of where we have the ability to focus our attention to and seeing where we have to meet. So that's what we have going on currently.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claims against the city dated April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Madam Mayor, I move that we pay the claims against the city.
I second. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I have a question about one of the charges. I didn't know why there was a whole pile of six-five Creedmoor ammunition that the city was paying for. I figured it had something to do with law enforcement or or something, but I saw a whole pile of ammo that I don't normally see on the, on the claims. But I guess we have to get her that towards the.
The police claim, yeah.
Oh, it was from the P. Okay, I guess that makes sense then.
The police department. It's under the police department, so we don't have an answer to that.
That was my only question. I have nothing further.
Probably because they're tazers.
Won't done that dog.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn this office council meeting.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, adjourn at eight thirty-three.